First thing I'll announce is item two, the presentation number two for Mayor's Youth Council Member is going to be rescheduled. They had a scheduling conflict on there. That is on the, before the regular agenda. And then on the regular agenda, item four relating to the Energy Controls Grants, that item is going to be moved, requested by staff. So, other items will move forward on. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. And do I see our pastor here, Mr. Pierce? Yes, there he is. Come on forward, Mr. Pierce. Thanks for being here.
Father, we are grateful through you because you are God, our Creator and our Sustainer. You are the one who has offered us, if we will seek you, wisdom, wisdom that we could not know from human means. And so, Lord, I pray that as all the issues are dealt with in our this community across this nation, Lord, you will give wisdom to our leaders. Thank you for those who serve. Bless them and guide your steps.
Father, on this national day of prayer, we pray that, that we would keep our eyes, not only today on you, but every day, knowing that you are the one who gives us life and you guide our life by your Holy Spirit. We pray for our young men and women in the military, Father. We ask that you be with them, keep them safe, bring them home real soon. We thank you for your goodness. Thank you for the community of Fountain Hills and those who lead us here. Bless them. Bless their families. Bless this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Pierce. Pastor Pierce from First Baptist Church. And it is a national day of prayer, so make sure you said your prayers today for our country. Roll call, please, Steph.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here. Welcome, everyone. I've got a proclamation to read here. The town of Fountain Hills, whereas an estimated 10 million people in the United States, six to eight percent of the population of our country and millions of people worldwide have been diagnosed with Fibromyalgia, a disease where, in which there is no norm, cure, or cause. And whereas Fibromyalgia is a chronic illness increasing at alarming rates that causes fatigue and debilitating pain in women, men, and children of all ethnicities. And whereas patients with this illness often have to live to learn to live with the widespread pain throughout their bodies, extreme fatigue, sleep disorders, stiffness, and weakness, migraine headaches, numbness and tingling, impairment of memory and concentration. And whereas it may take years to receive a diagnosis of Fibromyalgia, and medical professionals are often inadequately educated on the diagnosis and treatment of Fibromyalgia. And whereas increased awareness and expanded knowledge of the realities of life with Fibromyalgia will allow the community at large to be better supportive of people who struggle with the challenges of this chronic pain disorder. And whereas various organizations, businesses, and others around the country promote Fibromyalgia awareness and support, including improved education, diagnosis, research, and treatment. Whereas the community's focus on Fibromyalgia and its impact to patients' lives will help guarantee and hope for a better future for people with Fibromyalgia. I therefore, J.T. Schlum, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby recognize the needs of these chronically ill people and proclaim May 12, 2011, as Fibromyalgia Awareness Day in Fountain Hills and urge all citizens to support and the search for a cure and assist those individuals whose families who deal with this devastating disease on a daily basis. Next item, we do have a presentation tonight from Mr. Barry Broom, who is President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. And I'll introduce Lori Gary, who will greet our guest tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, and members of the council. I have asked Barry Broom, who is President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, to come before you all today and share with you a little bit about what GPEC is doing, how they're promoting Phoenix, and, and we as members of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, how we're benefiting from our membership in GPEC. So, this evening, I'd like to introduce Barry Broom, again, President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Mr. Broom?
Thank you for having me. I guess we're gonna dare and test my, now let's see if I can do it just for fun. Dun 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 dun, sorta. F5, okay.
Yep.
All right.
For coming out Fountain Hills, same.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And thank you, members of council, for having me. And I've been in, I've been the president of GPEC now six and a half years. Hard to believe. And, you know, in the Valley, one of the things that's exciting is it's a, you know, dynamic place. And one of the challenges when you build an economy, it takes a while to groove out, you know, an economic model. And sometimes the dynamism works against that because I, I'll be working with my fourth speaker now in six and a half years. I'll be, you know, I've worked with four presidents of senates and the business leadership is very mobile as well. But I think one of the things we've tried to do is, you know, GPEC has tried to become an institution in the community where, you know, there's a constant, continuous effort collectively by all the communities and then, of course, the business leadership to work on behalf of the good of everyone. And I think we've, we've done a pretty good job. I guess that's more other people's objectives, but, you know, being the constant promoter, you know, you just can't seem to stop yourself. One of the things that is really important is, you know, I love Fountain Hills. You know, I like spending weekends here and, you know, it's such an amazing place. And, you know, when you think about the economic vitality of Fountain Hills, you know what you contribute to the region. You're one of the destination places in the region. And of course, in a region that has to attract high-end talent and executive talent, innovative talent, you know, there's a certain requirement of where they like to live. And those places are like Fountain Hills. So, when you think about what Fountain Hills does to contribute to the region, you know, you're destining a lifestyle community that's critical not only to tourism and those pure destination activities, but you're also, you know, creating a community that presents a lifestyle that's, you know, pivotal. So, a lot of times when a company may be looking to bring a lot of employees into Scottsdale, where there might be a large landmass transaction, a lot of times we take them to dinner in Fountain Hills and they can see how incredibly majestic this community is. And they start thinking about their livability options. And of course, you know, the way we create economic benefits is across political jurisdictions and we do that in a market setting. So, you know, it was about 1988, 1989, after the collapse of cities, that people were really struggling on how they build the economy. And they really began to understand that, you know, it's really about a region, a metropolitan area, where, you know, capital and supply chains and talent and competitive issues like schools and university choice are all aggregated, you know, in this geographic area. And some of them sit in some political jurisdictions and some of them sit in others. And one political jurisdiction makes one kind of contribution to the regional economy and the other makes another. So, you know, Sky Harbor would be an example of something that makes a really important contribution to Fountain Hills' economic well-being. And, you know, it's a, obviously, an airport managed by the city of Phoenix. So, it's a true regional public-private partnership. And when I came to GPEC six and a half years ago, it was about 60% funded by the cities. And one of the things that I wanted to do for the communities, and we know how scarce dollars have become, is to get to where GPEC kinda turned that around to where now we're 28% funded by the cities, predominantly privately funded. But yet, you know, the organization's mission hasn't changed. You know, the purpose of GPEC, even though it's a business organization, is to work on behalf of the communities. So, it's a little bit, you know, I liken it to a United Way, where if you, if you're familiar with the United Way, it's business leadership, business activity, but the objective is to serve needy people through the social service networks. And of course, GPEC, its business leadership focuses on competitiveness, but its goal is to serve the well-being of the communities. And we've only had three presidents since 1987, so there's been a lot of continuity. And it's organizationally, it's well-regarded nationally. And that's really a credit to my colleagues like Lori Gary and others who work together. If you go into a lot of communities across the United States, these cities do nothing but fight and the economic development people don't talk to each other. Here in the Valley, we have, you know, the mayor has done a number of things with other colleagues, business leaders at GPEC. You know, we have a very unique environment for collaboration and it's worked to our advantage. And I think it's really made us a model other people want to follow. What I thought I would do is I did a little analysis on prospect activity. And one of the things, when people think of GPEC, they think, well, they attract companies here. And really, that's kinda like a service. You know, so you, you run a, a, a community and, you know, you might be noted for one or two things, or people may pay a tremendous amount of attention to a high-visibility project. And that's what the community's talking about. But you're really doing all these incredible things, police, fire, you know, refuse, parks, recreation, you know, keeping the trains on time. And there's an incredible amount of body of work at GPEC that it takes to build a regional economy. People see the outcome being a company here and they kinda think G, they see GPEC almost as a retail sales organization. And it's really not a true way to characterize us, but obviously, we pay a lot of attention to the companies we bring in because that's the fiscal impact that gives everybody their returns for putting money in GPEC. So, you gotta pay attention to that. But I think this is a really interesting dynamic at looking how GPEC and the market has changed. And if you look at, 2011 isn't completed yet. If you go back to 2007, you'll see about 29% of our leads, if you look at the top right, our business activity came through what was in the Arizona Department of Commerce. And then each one of those different systems or delivery systems on how we work with. So, we work with our economic development directors. We have something called GPEC 100. So, we, we have a network of what we consider the top 100 business consultants or consulting groups in the country. And so, when a Fortune 500 company or publicly traded company begins to make a decision on, you know, investing in a new division and where's that division gonna go and how are we gonna apply this capital, you know, they hire a very extensive consulting team that analyze and give advice and counsel the CEOs. So, one of the core functions of our organization is we're modeled and especially in our inception, we're more diversified now, but we're modeled to specifically interface with Deloitte, Ernst &amp; Young, Watley Donovan, you know, Chase, investment banking houses, you know, financial institutions that are advising CFOs on how they get the return on capital and CEOs on how they analyze business environments and clusters and chains and technology. So, we're really structured to do that. But over time, what happened is, and now analyzing this, you know, there's an entire industry piece that does not have the affordability to go lay out seven figures to retain one of these guys. Well, how do you go out and reach that sector? And so, even though in the GPEC 100, we get a tremendous amount of business activity, if you look at what's really moved, this GPEC Direct has been really, it peaked with 42% in 2010. But most of our business activity comes from us doing direct selling. And so, we started to integrate kind of an outbound sales team, you know, for better term, a call center that doesn't give everybody a really cool idea. So, we've been trying to name it something else. But, you know, we have three or four people that are young, that have a couple of years' experience in business, that do nothing but directly manage calls out into small technology markets in California. So, we call Silicon Valley, you know, every week. And really, when you call into a technology firm that's got 25 employees, you can get the CEO on the phone. And you can learn a lot from that. And then when our organization has all this extensive experience that normally interfaces with an Ernst &amp; Young or the Deloitte, when we talk to a CEO of a small tech company, we've become the Ernst &amp; Young. And that's one of the reasons. So, now this small tech company's deciding, you know, they just got a big commitment in venture capital and they're gonna add 100 people and they gotta move out of this site and they don't know if they wanna be in California anywhere, Nevada, what do they do? Well, we now turn the tables and act almost as that consultant to that company. Of course, you know, we, they know we inordinately recommend that they come into this market, but it's kind of interesting. We work through our investor network, local brokers, out-of-state brokers, and then, you know, phone calls, people that just come in. So, as you can see, usually, pipeline building exercises is an example. So, if you look at the bottom, 168 companies in 2007, 167 companies in 2008, those are the number of companies that we're, that we're working with that actually shortlist us. So, that's the number of companies that put us in a top five or top 10 number. And so, the, the main goal for us is we go through literally 10,000 or more outbound interfaces with company and industry to try to get down to a network of about 200 to 250 companies. And the, the average timetable for a company to make the decision can be up to two and a half years. So, at 168, 167, 198, you know, we're adding to the shortlist, we're falling off the shortlist, we're not being a finalist. And so, right now, we're working with about 350 active companies. And that's really about the best portfolio that we've had. One of the things, we're having the biggest year in the history of GPEC right now. And one of the reasons that we did that is we, what we called optimizing our business activity. So, if you looked at that business model, you know, before, six and a half years ago, you know, the Valley's had this really fairly simple understanding of how to build the economy. It's growth-oriented. You know, we all know the tutorial on that now. But, you know, we built an international business practice and a lot of people thought that, you know, that was kind of a hokey thing. But now, you know, 20% of GPEC's performance is international companies. And so, one of the things that we observed, and it is, this goes into our research and development team, we have seven economists that do nothing but analyze data for us and, you know, share. And that's one of the things that Lori gets out of GPEC, is we have about a half a million-dollar research and development practice. So, for your contribution, there is several hundred thousand dollars in resources just sitting there that Lori interfaces, you know, for one, one modest fee. But, so our research and development team, you know, when we were looking at the international markets, you know, Arizona was ranked 14th in the country in foreign direct, or in trade. So, we had this incredible trade position, obviously, Mexico and the semiconductor industry into the Asian markets. Yet, we were 41st in the nation in foreign direct investment. That's basically a fancy term for some company from Japan moved here. And when we did the analysis, I analyzed all the other markets and everybody else was almost at parity. So, California was the number one trade market in the United States. They were number two in foreign direct investment. Texas was two in trade and one in foreign direct investment. So, Pennsylvania was like five and five. New York was three and three. You know, Michigan was four and four. And we were 41 and 14. So, we did an analysis and we realized if we brought our foreign direct investment position from 41 to 14, like our trade position, which gives you kinda the idea of benchmarking and how you do analysis, we'd have 80,000 high-wage jobs added to Arizona's economy. So, we put a lot of emphasis in it. We weren't sure how well we were gonna do, but we've done tremendously well. And, you know, we now have, we're now competing for the market share for China, you know, and we pretty much have, have gotten the market share for Spain. Spain now invests in the Valley. So, if Spain makes a move into the western half of the U.S., they come into the, then at the Valley. We missed the German market share because we had a bill fail that didn't help us with our competitive position. But Canada, we're doing very well. And I think, I think really, from a foreign direct investment position over the next five years, you know, China's gonna put $2 trillion in foreign direct investment in the next 10 years. And that's an enormous number and our goal is to get, get a good spot on that. These are the kind of companies, I mean, really simply put, we kinda have these, what I would call, they call them advanced business services, but they're really services that are export industries. Other things like the Apollo Group, University of Phoenix, aerospace, which, you know, you're familiar with, for one of the top aerospace markets in the country, bioscience, healthcare, high-tech, and renewables. And of course, we built a renewable practice from scratch and we've been named the number one solar renewable market in the country. A publicly traded biofuels company moved their headquarters to Scottsdale, 500 employees. And the interface from GPEC to get that biofuels company to go to Scottsdale was less than 30 minutes. So, we called the company, you know, we, we heard they had an interest and they were, we were in the middle of setting up all our big run at them. And they said, look, we're just coming. And they said, you know, Abengoa, First Solar, all the things that are going on in your market, what ASU's doing, it's pretty clear to us, you're, you're gonna be the top renewable market. And that's exciting because there's gonna be about 2 million jobs created in this renewable sector. And, you know, one of the things that we talked to the legislature about, and they've been helpful to us sometimes, and the governor's been helpful to us sometimes, not so helpful recently, but is, you know, we don't want this economy to recover. We do not want the 2007 economy in 2014. I mean, we want a different economy. We want an economy that's for a kid's futures. And working on this renewable space is gonna give us a chance to do that, but that's not enough either. You know, we've gotta get much more robust. So, one of the things that we're doing in this renewable sector is we're starting to move into things like battery storage and grids. And, you know, it's really interesting, I love when this happens. But, you know, Intel just made a big investment in solar. And, you know, renewable and solar energy storage, you know, the two leading companies in that industry space right now are Boeing and Lockheed. So, you know, it's better to be lucky than good. You know, we work on this sector and then the, the mature industries that are starting to move into the sector as it becomes validated by the entrepreneurs is Intel, Boeing, and Lockheed Martin. And of course, Lockheed Martin's in Goodyear and Boeing's in the East Valley. So, we think we, we picked a good spot and we feel pretty good about what we're doing. It's not a real easy slide to see, but, but basically, we are 290% above goal on our payroll. We are just at our average wage and salary, very tough, you know, our, so we've brought 6,500 jobs. And, you know, we, you know, we have a lot of, you know, the guys that are smarter than everybody that run around the state capital that drive me crazy. I'm a little particularly sensitive, so if it sounds like a therapy session, you know, let me know, Mayor. But, you know, they sit around and say, oh, you know, what does that matter? You know, what does this matter? What does that matter? But, you know, the First Solar announcement in Mesa at Buildout, 4.4 million square feet, that project will create more construction jobs than the entire state of Arizona will produce in the next two and a half years. So, you know, and, and so, there's the, the statement for working with communities and community economic development on why this isn't just some magic event that occurs without communities. And then, the other piece that I think is really important to remember is, you know, when you deliver one job, that's one family. And if I get up out of bed tomorrow and I liberate one family in the community, that's worth getting up out of bed. But these are really impressive numbers and we're very proud of them. And we're, we're able to hit those because of a lot of the hard work. And you can see, we're 233% of international prospects. So, the Suntech announcement that came into the West Valley, they have identified 16 companies in Shanghai that they have some type of strategic relationship with that are gonna come into the Valley in the next four years. And so, that's exciting news. I think we're projecting 15 to 25 suppliers just connected to First Solar. So, just those two announcements, you know, you could have another 40 companies come in. What's amazing about that is, you know, the semiconductor industry is about 25,000 people. And if you've been in the Valley for 15, 20 years or more, you know, we lived off of that. We had 98,000 people working in the semiconductor industry in 1998. We lost Motorola and we basically decoupled. And now, we're pretty much living off of Intel and, you know, the carve-outs from Motorola. But if you look right now here in the Valley, there are over 100 solar and renewable companies and we're at 20,000 employees. So, you know, a couple more big opportunities and by 2012, 2013, solar renewables will pass the semiconductor industry as an employer in Arizona. That's pretty amazing. So, I talked a little bit about, you know, our objectives going forward. You know, one of the things I didn't talk about was California. One of my concerns is this poaching mentality that's floating around in Arizona. We're gonna go to California and pull people out of California. And of course, there, the companies that are moving out of California, we want them here. But to approach the California market like that's a little bit tricky in my opinion for Arizona, because one of the things that really works for us in Arizona is, you know, we have an integrated relationship with California's economy. So, a lot of the high-tech, knowledge sector industries in Northern California, they know they can't do their applied engineering and manufacturing in California. And so, we wanna go into those markets as a collaborator and somebody that wants to work with them and help them make good business decisions. And if that business decision is they're gonna put engineering and manufacturing outside of that market, we already know that it is, we want them to have a relationship with us. But if we go in on a market with a kind of a high-profile anti-California campaign, then people draw up on it. So, it's a very tricky thing to work the California market because, you know, a lot of the people that are coming in with these hostile California markets are coming in from Virginia and North Carolina. So, other than breaking loose a company, they have no relationship. But if you look at Avnet, Intel, you know, Google, eBay, PayPal, you know, we have employers now here with 5, 6,000 employees or more, who's basically their nerve centers in the north end of California. So, we wanna be very thoughtful about how we treat the California community. One of the things that we're gonna be working on this year is to do more with retention and expansion. You know, we're trying to figure out, you know, how, how many services can we add to our community to strengthen their economic development efforts without becoming a large organization or asking for lots more money? You know, we like to keep our money fairly stable. You know, we run GPEC at about a 3% growth rate. You know, I sat down with my team today. I don't, I don't want a big organization. When I took over GPEC, we had 25 employees. That was six and a half years ago. We got 27 now. We try to get efficient and better and more productive. But one of the things we learned on this retention and expansion model is, you know, we have this very good seven-person R&amp;D shop and our ability to build and maintain information and data is pretty exceptional. And we think we can do a better job at maintaining and building information on companies that are here to support Lori and her retention efforts. Not necessarily have GPEC coming into Fountain Hills with Lori and calling on companies, but creating kind of a backup information system that supports Lori and the rest of you when you work on retaining companies in Fountain Hills. We don't have that all worked out, but we're gonna, we're gonna create some pilot this year on that. And we love working with our communities to develop competitiveness programs. We've had a lot of success recently. I was very proud the fact that we got a very tough bill through the legislature, unfortunately. The governor vetoed it and we're still trying to get the answers on that. But this bill would've given you a tool to eliminate real and personal property taxes by 80% for 10 years. And it would've been at the discretion of council. So, this would've been something made available to you. Use it or don't use it. Use it for a specific reason or don't use it at all. And, you know, part of what we've been trying to convince the state policymakers is to arm the communities with capabilities. And the people in Fountain Hills elect all of you here and you seem to be really intelligent people. I'm sure if we gave you some things to work with on your economy, you'd do them judiciously. But for some reason, we got a veto on that and we'll continue to work with the governor's office and, and figure that out. And we're disappointed in the veto, but we also wanted to acknowledge that Governor Brewer did a lot of good things. She vetoed the, you know, state government-run, the local government bill. She vetoed Tabor, which would've been an absolute unadulterated disaster. So, if we got swept in some of those vetoes, then, you know, so be it. I thought she did a pretty good job and it's a pretty tough job right now. And, you know, we wanna continue to support and work with her. The other piece that we wanna put a big effort into is emerging innovation. That's the missing ingredient here in the Valley as, as an innovation model. We just launched a new branding campaign. I think I probably don't have to tell you why. We need to put some effort into our brand. But we're really focusing on using social media and digital media efforts. And we have a really super outstanding marketing communications staff that are working on this. If you see the stuff that comes out of GPEC, it's really great. I have nothing to do with that, other than I got lucky and hired a really good marketing person. One of the things that we're looking at doing is putting a couple of million dollars and dropping that into the Southern California market. If there's one place, you know, if we, we go into New York and Boston, our brand there is pretty damaged, quite honestly. But they didn't think a lot of us to begin with. So, you know, you know, if you've ever worked a lot in Boston and New York, it's, they're, they're, it's like London, you know, those three places are not super open-minded about who's, who they should be doing business with. But I am a little bit concerned with the boycotts and some of the things that happen in California. So, one of the things we're gonna do is build this brand, but we're really gonna put a concentration in the California market because that's where we get so much of our tourism and interchange in our business. And getting our brand reestablished there is gonna be a first step. We also, we just sent it, we just sent this out. If you didn't get it, Lori had it. But we just had a great story in New York Times about us being, you know, beating Texas in the battle for supremacy for clean technology. And that's something that was a real high priority of us. And that was another bill that we passed through that Lori did a lot of work on. The mayor sent a bill 1403, the governor signed that. And that's one of the reasons why we've been able to knock down such a great position in the renewable sector. So, we'll continue to work on media engagement. We really enjoy working with your team and we enjoy the chances we've had to work with your leadership. And we are grateful for the support and we're continuing to look forward to having a very good year. And we hope the clouds are starting to part a little bit on this economy. I think the economy will look a little bit better in '12 and start to feel pretty good in '13. But one of the things that we're very committed to is excellence. Probably the thing that frustrates me most in this job is, you know, good shouldn't be good enough for us. There's absolutely no reason why this region shouldn't be the envy of the United States of America. We should be the single most dynamic, exciting place in the country. We're absolutely poised to be that. And, you know, we need to just get our house in order and get a vision and a commitment to do that. And, you know, that's, that's our dream and our goal for our community. So, Mayor, thank you for having me. Members of council, are there any questions?
Yeah, thanks. I'm sure we have a few questions. Council, Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
The Senate Bill 1041, the jobs bill that was vetoed, now the cities, they were divided on that bill? Is that the case?
No, we had total support from the cities. Yeah, we had the League of Cities 100% support. Yeah, League of Cities actually endorsed it and lobbied for it. And, you know, we had, we had unanimous support. And, and Lori chairs AED, it was probably the best effort I think we ever had as a state. We had complete uniform commitment from the entire state of Arizona and 50 business-led organizations. Normally, we have a problem with the chambers, you know, we have all these little, we tend to splinter. But we had, we had unity. And we had the chairman of the Board of the Arizona Commerce Authority, Jerry Colangelo, who was appointed by the governor to chair that. And it was an Arizona Commerce Authority recommendation.
And the House and Senate passed it over.
Yeah, it was passed 80% public, both Democrats and Republicans.
So, Mayor Barry, are, I heard that there might be a special session to address some of the bills that were vetoed and some of the things that the, that the governor had issues with. Is that one of them?
We sure hope so. You know, we haven't really, you know, it was, to be honest, we were, we were shocked at the veto. In so much, I don't know, Lori, would you agree? Um, in so much, uh, I don't know, Lori, would you agree? We were shocked because maybe, maybe we're new to that, but we were shocked at the veto. Um, you know, we got, um, positive calls out of the governor's office that they'll sit down in a couple of weeks and tell us what some of their issues were and that they would work with us. So we remain cautiously optimistic. But I thought it was a pretty good bill. You know, if you've ever, you know, if you've ever written policy before and put it through the legislature, by the time it gets onto the governor's desk, very few of those bills don't need a little bit of work. And so usually the bill is signed with some recommendations. And I anticipated there might be some recommendations, but I did not expect the veto.
Mayor, yes. Um, the city of Glendale's a member of GPEC, correct?
Yes.
Are, do you have a role with what's going on with there with the, um, keeping the hockey team in, in their city?
A, a little bit. I mean, I've, I've supported them on it for a couple of reasons. I mean, first off, um, I think people are underestimating the blow to the reputation of the market if the Coyotes leave. So from a market perspective, I mean, one of the things that GPEC, it's always tricky for GPEC, but, you know, we have a market reputation responsibility. So if the Coyotes leave, I mean, they think they're in Phoenix, they think they're in Mesa, nobody knows where they're at. One of the, giving example of a market, uh, Kiplinger just came out and named the comeback cities for 2011 and they named the city of Phoenix and congratulated them on landing for solar. So I sent Scott Smith a little email from Mesa saying congratulations, you made the city the comeback city. So, you know, that's what people, that's a, Kiplinger's a pretty sharp report, but, you know, out of Washington DC, out of New York, they just, they're just going to see this as a black eye for us. And on the heels of so many other things that haven't been helping us on a reputation standpoint, I think holding the Coyotes is really important. Uh, I have, the second thing that's really important is the city owns that arena and it's not going anywhere. So when I caught a little bit of heat for supporting Mayor Scruggs on that, I said, well, if they take the entire arena with them and make all the payments, maybe I'd feel differently about it, but I'm pretty sure if they leave, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, and, and that's a $25 million obligation that would be stranded. And the other thing too, you know, the West Valley is really important. You know, when, when, when you look at balance, so you have these communities, you have communities like Fountain Hills that have, you know, a very envied position, but, you know, the threat to Fountain Hills is the collapse of Mesa. You know, I mean, you know, a, a failed Mesa is what would be a threat to your interests. And so when you pay attention to a Mesa, you're lifting an Apache Junction and a Queen Creek and a Cave Creek that has suffered from this incredible real estate crash and then you preserve a Fountain Hills and then of course you take care of a Mesa. So when, so Glendale is the bellwether for the West Valley. And if the Coyotes leave and the arena closes and West Gate fails, you know, and God forbid the NFL would have a lockout, I mean, just imagine that rolling through the West Valley. And there's a number of those communities that aren't struggling quite like a Queen Creek or Cave Creek or Apache Junction, but there's a number of those communities like Surprise. I think there have been quarters where Surprise has led the nation in foreclosures. Now Surprise has also become one of the winners in this renewable game too, where these Spanish companies are going. But, you know, Glendale will, that could be a domino effect throughout the West Valley and it will be a domino effect on the reputation of the region.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brewer? Well, Barry, I know from, uh, being a part of the organization, some of the meetings and efforts, you've done a very good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I appreciate your leadership and your, and you, obviously, if, if you know you at all or just heard this presentation, I know your energy and passion, so I know your staff's equally passionate. But, um, just for council to get a little better, better breath of the public about, uh, what I see is I, the collaboration at these, um, board meetings with the public and the private sector folks getting together where you've got the president of ASU and the president of these big organizations, all sharing and working towards, um, winning, uh, things that are good for our valley is very impressive and it's a great opportunity for folks to come together, um, to obtain greater things. Um, the diversity in the economy you guys have been addressing, uh, head-on, obviously we've seen the impacts of being, um, kind of siloed.
Mm-hmm.
And you're, you're, um, impressing upon many to expand our, um, sectors of business in, in Arizona has been terrific, particularly in the Valley. And the focus on higher tech and renewables is key to where the money's going, uh, right now and the good, good, better paying jobs. I mean, that's been reflective in the numbers I've seen, the, the job wages are going up as far as the, the higher quality jobs coming here. And then I think the last year or two, you've been focusing also, uh, more on the retention and the businesses that are here as well. I think the bill that, uh, just failed to address that as well, where it also, uh, was beneficial to existing businesses.
Yeah.
So I think that's been a, something I'll lift you up for as well. But, um, uh, also you didn't mention tonight, as I know there'll be more information, maybe through social media and other means, uh, coming to more elected officials. So maybe I won't be the only one that'll get as much information. You'll be, guys will be reaching out to more elected officials, other council members as well. So I think that'll be welcomed also because once a year it's great to see you, but it's also good for our council to be engaged in what's going on so we can either, uh, share concerns or, or help with efforts as well. And I think you're right, the supply chain, uh, the piece, the, the piece that's not as, uh, exciting when you land these big opportunities, you get all these vendors and, uh, and, uh, suppliers that are going to be following to bring good jobs, to support those huge, um, companies that have been landed. And of course Fountain Hills, you know what our, what we bring and we certainly would appreciate all the support you and GPEC can bring to help us land the businesses that make great sense for our community as well.
Absolutely. And we really enjoy working with you and we appreciate your support.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Good. Well, thanks, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. As I mentioned, the second presentation will be rescheduled from our mayor's youth council. Now we will move to call to the public. Any speaker cards tonight? Bev.
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards. Janet Johnston and Bo James.
Good, thank you. Ms. Johnson, come on forward to the microphone right where Mr. Brewer just was.
I want to thank Mr. Brewer and his associates for providing us that way for me.
Oh, good.
What I have to say.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Friends and fellow residents of Fountain Hills, mayor, councilwomen, councilmen. My name's Janet Johnston. Public speaking is not my forte, so I have to remember to breathe. But what I've come, I've come to entreat, make an entreaty to the city of couns, the city council regarding the preservation of Fountain Hills, as Mr. Brewer just indicated in the remarks, an excellent presentation that he made. This is a most desirable place to live. Um, I commute, have commuted for a number of years because I choose to live here because of the uniqueness of Fountain Hills. There's been a number of items that have concerned me greatly over the past few months from town government, but most specifically recently, the establishment or the attempt to establish a marijuana clinic in a unique town, Fountain Hills. It appears to me, I'm not saying that it is, but it appears to me that Fountain Hills has set as its goal, being renamed as just like anywhere else, Arizona, zip code 85268. As we attempt to, uh, copy and become, uh, the typical suburb, Fountain Hills has a unique identity as a town. If we establish a marijuana clinic here, we'll have dope dealers here. Just wait until you have your first marijuana-related fatality. Either a citizen of Fountain Hills or someone who has come into this town to purchase marijuana at the legal clinic. I'm entreating you, I'm asking you, I'm requesting you to do an emergency session, whatever that might be, to change the zoning ordinances in this town. I may be misinformed, but I understand that Paradise Valley and Scottsdale have elected not to consider having a marijuana clinic in their town. Point number two, marijuana or synthesized marijuana for patients at end-of-life and in extreme pain is available for medical doctors. I'm not a doctor. I don't play a doctor on TV, but I have talked to doctors and I have friends who are doctors and their families. Marijuana is available or the synthesized marijuana is available. We do not need this in our town. I feel like Fountain Hills is the little red wool, is the little red riding hood and the big bad wool for the second time has come and knocked on our door. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston, and appreciate your love of our community. And I'll add, see if, uh, it's not an agendized item, we'll see if, uh, Town Attorney McGuire can speak to, share anything related to that because it has been a concern that's been shared and there's been a lot of news on it. Mr. McGuire, anything you can share on that? And that's not going to be a discussion for council since it's not agendized.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, during calls with the public, the only thing we can do is respond to criticism and I don't know that we really can call this criticism, but we'll be happy to get in touch with her.
Absolutely. Good. Thanks, Ms. Johnston.
Bev, do you have the contact information?
It is an item that we're staying close to, so thank you. And make sure we can get ahold of you. Thanks.
Mr. James?
Welcome, Mr. James.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. As a veteran, I'd like to invite you all and the rest of the town to the Memorial Day commemorations to be held nine o'clock on Monday, Memorial Day, the 30th of May, right down at the Veterans Memorial here in Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Nine AM?
Nine AM.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Move now to the consent agenda. And I'll read these items, two items. Item one, consideration approving the town council meeting minutes from April 4, 12, and 21, 2011. And consideration, and number, item two, consideration of the final replat for lot line adjustment between 15-848 East Palomino and 15-860 East Palomino Boulevard. May I get a motion?
Some move.
Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much. Item number three, we've gone to the regular agenda, consideration of Resolution 2011-15, naming the Senior Services Advisory Center the John O. Flynn Senior Activity Center. Is Kelly here? Is that Kelly? How are you?
Good.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor and council. On behalf of the Senior Services Advisory Commission, I am requesting consideration of Resolution 2011-15, the renaming of the Senior Service Activity Center office to the John O. Flynn Senior Activity Center. John O. Flynn was a resident of the town of Fountain Hills from 1984 to 2008. Throughout that period, he worked toward establishing programs that would benefit the community senior citizens. John O. Flynn was personally involved and supported the development of the Home Delivered Meals Program. When the town of Fountain Hills acquired senior services programs as a new division, John O. Flynn was appointed Chair of the Senior Services Advisory Commission and for several years continued to provide vision and guidance to the senior programs until his passing in 2008. In recognition of the exceptional community service that John O. Flynn provided to the town and its residents, it is appropriate and consistent with the town's naming policy to rename the Senior Activity Center as the John O. Flynn Senior Activity Center. This item is being brought forward now as the existing naming policy required a two-year waiting time period since John O. Flynn's passing. This item was approved by both the Senior Services Advisory Commission and the Community Center Advisory Commission. Commission meeting minutes were included in your packet along with a letter that was sent to the mayor and council on February 25th, 2009. The intent is to have a five-inch by 20-inch plaque placed outside the Activity Center office. The request is similar to the Resolution 2006-12 dedicating the Community Center Reception Desk as the Evelyn and Ken Breding Reception Desk. I want to make sure it is clear, this is not renaming the Community Center. The plaque honoring John O. Flynn would be placed outside the Senior Activity Center office, just under the Senior Service Department sign. The plaque will match the existing signage in the Community Center and I received a price quote of $130, not including tax. Funds to purchase the plaque are in the current budget year and listed in town budget on page 231, under Senior Services Administration Office Supplies. Staff's recommendation is to approve this resolution and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Council, look for a motion.
Some move.
All right. Thank you, Cassie. Uh, second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff? They did a nice presentation, Kelly.
Thank you.
Appreciate your clarification and sharing the information directly from the Senior Services Advisory Commission and they've done a great job in considering this as well. Um, any questions at all? Councilmember Elke?
Uh, Kelly, is, uh, are, are we in communication with, um, Mr. O. Flynn's family or anything like that? Where would we be able to communicate anything that we may do to?
Yes, I, I spoke with Betty and if there's anything you want communicated to her, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, I think, along the lines of, Councilmember Elke, it's a great opportunity to lift up again, uh, and our thanks for, uh, the support, Mr. O. Flynn, John and, and Betty as well, that have given for years and Betty continues to do so. Look forward to an opportunity to celebrate that plaque being placed if we all vote in the affirmative, which I think we will.
Yes, you will.
And, uh, thanks for explaining we are not renaming, we are not re, we will, we will do what Kelly says. We will know we're not renaming the Community Center.
Yes.
Good to, good to mention as well. Um, but this is a great opportunity to lift up. So I mean, it's also done a great, yeah, many, many, many great things specifically for seniors here in Fountain Hills. So any, uh, other questions, comments? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, item four is, uh, is going to, was pulled from the agenda, uh, request to staff, so we'll likely see that again later. Item number five, we'll call on Bob here. We'll have one report for the two items. Uh, consideration of a two-year extension of the approved utility disturbance permit for La Bella Vita at Fire Rock and consideration of a two-year extension of time to record the final plat for La Bella Vita at Fire Rock. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The concept plan and final plat for La Bella Vita were originally approved in 2006. The utility disturbance permit was originally approved in 2008. Due to the economic conditions, the development has not yet begun construction. During this time, the applicant has requested and has received annual extensions of their approvals from the town. Last year, all three approvals were grouped together and given the same expiration date, May 15th, in order to facilitate processing future extension requests or other permit processes. During the interim, the applicant has been working with the Fire Rock HOA to get their architectural design approvals in order. This request tonight is to extend the approvals for the utility disturbance permit and the requirement to record the final plat for another two years until May 15th, 2013. Planning and zoning commission approved the extension of the concept plan and has forwarded[1718.01] and has forwarded to council the recommendation that the utility disturbance permit and final plat recording extensions also be granted. And staff also recommends approval and the extensions as presented, and the applicants are present, as well as I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Bob. Anyone from the public on either of these two items? All right, council is due to take separate motions on this item. Anyone wish to make a motion on the first item?
No move.
We may need to read that one in, suggest a motion.
Sure. Move to approve the two-year extension of the utility disturbance permit for La Bella Vita at Fire Rock, at parcel B of Fire Rock. Set extension to expire May 15, 2013.
Second.
All right, any questions related to this item?
Mayor, I will not be voting on these two items.
So Councilmember Brown recues himself for these two items. Thank you. Mayor, I do have a question. Councilmember Leger?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I recall having this discussion in August of 2006 where we, the council, I believe unanimously approved this project after much consideration and some changes that were made to the project. Has anything changed since then, I guess is my question?
Nothing has changed.
Okay, so we're looking basically at what we approved in the past, and this is simply an extension due to the downturn in the economy and the difficulty getting the project off the ground.
There may have been some tweaks with some of the façades due to the HOA.
Some architectural features.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on, I guess, either item? All right, we have a motion and a second on the first item. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 60?
Thank you. And item number six, consideration of two-year extension. Do we have a motion on that item for the final plat?
I'll move, Mayor.
All right.
I move to approve the two-year extension of the time to record the final plat for La Bella Vita at Fire Rock, at parcel B of Fire Rock. Set extension will expire May 15, 2013.
Do we have a second? Second? All right, any discussion on the extension of the final plat? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 60?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob. All right, item number seven, council discussion direction of the town manager. Nothing on that one. And eight, summary of council request and report on recent activities by the town manager.
Just, Mayor and council, just a reminder that we have Shea under construction right now, and just to remind everybody to exercise caution and patience around that area. The construction begins with the development of the medians themselves, the planted medians, and then the other roadway improvements then continue from there. We're looking at a July, mid-July, into July termination of that project. We're very excited for those improvements.
Thank you very much, Rick. Look now for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, may I make just one comment?
Yes, Councilmember Leger.
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to publicly thank and acknowledge our men and women serving in our militaries and specifically SEAL Team Six.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. And now, motion to adjourn?
No move.
And a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you.